I'm going to call to order the special meeting of the Woodford County Board of Education. Thank you, everybody, for coming out tonight. It looks like we have all our board members here except for Ms. Richardson. So let the role reflect that. Before we get started, I'm going to just briefly introduce some people who are going to be giving presentations, and then if they want to, they can talk a little bit more about themselves. We have our architect from Ross Tarrant, Kevin Lock, and we have Kelly Mersick from Baird, which was formerly here at Hilliard Lions. So we have not changed bonding agents, they've just changed companies. And then also, we have Pam Thomas. I'm going to do a little more in-depth introduction to her before our question-and-answer portion of the program, but she is going to be moderating the questions tonight. Again, I want to thank everybody for coming out. I hope that this is a good way to get some factual information in front of you, hopefully overrepresented in a manner that you can clearly understand and lead to more questions down the road or more understanding. I also want to say that we have Ryan here again with us, and I think he may, are you going to speak a little bit about the meeting? Nope? Okay. All right, so let's get started. The first thing, we're going to have Mr. Hawkins go through the options that have been developed for this presentation. So, Mr. Hawkins.
Well, good evening, and certainly want to welcome you all this evening. Appreciate your interest in this topic and the wanting to gain the information that we will be providing and also to be able to get questions answered. I must say, when Ms. Evelyn first stated that we would take questions leading up to the forum, I didn't anticipate over 50 questions coming in. And so, we are going to do our best to go through those this evening. But I wanted to take just a few minutes to highlight what is in your packet. And we tried to color-code some different things for you to make it easier for you to follow along. You will see on the green sheets in your packet, those are the funding options that are being considered to construct a new high school. The blue sheets are our general fund history. And where that will be helpful, you will be hearing a lot of different terms utilized tonight. And so, you will be able to see what each of those terms means. For example, what is our general fund? What are capital outlay dollars? What are building fund dollars? And so, you can see a little bit about what those mean, but also our history as a school district and how we have gotten to this point. The last thing in your packet there is a list of expenditures, and those are from our general fund. You will see those are broken down into three different subsets. They are listed as statutorily or legally required expenditures. You will see that there are some that are supplemental expenditures, and then you also have discretionary expenditures. Those are all of the expenditures from our general fund budget broken down into categories. I do want to bring to your attention, if you see staff costs listed on those expenditures, that that is not just salary. If there are other employer-paid benefits included, that is also in that total for staff costs. So if we have to pay social security, or if we have to pay a retirement, that would also be included in those staff costs. So just a little bit of explanation on that. Let me call your attention then to the green sheets, and those are the funding options. And the first thing that I would want you to understand is that options one, two, and four all utilize capital outlay dollars. And just so you know, and why is that important? Other districts use capital outlay dollars for bonding projects, for making bond payments. That's not uncommon. However, our district, over the last 10 to 12 years, we have used capital outlay dollars for other small projects within our district. For example, if we have repaid a parking lot, or when we added a canopy on a bus-loading loop, when we installed security cameras in our schools, we utilize capital outlay dollars and paid cash for those projects. So it's significant in items in options one, two, and four, that those are restricted now. So what that does is that it would shift those costs that we normally have paid out of capital outlay to our general fund. So again, not uncommon for other districts to do that. It's not something we have traditionally done here, but it would add some additional expense to our general fund. The nickel, you'll notice, is option three. It does not utilize capital outlay dollars. So that is the amount of money we would generate from a bonding standpoint, just if a nickel were to be levied and passed. So in each of the options, you will notice across the top, for example, option one states that if we were to restrict $600,000 in general fund and our capital outlay, $292,000, we would have 45, a little over $45 million in bonding. And so, what option one then lays out is what we are able to do in option one. We could build a classroom building and an auxiliary gym according to the plans that have been provided. You will also notice that we list some costs to taxpayers, as well as some of the risk involved if option one were to be utilized. Option two, same way, except that it is a $950,000 restriction, and you will notice it also utilizes capital outlay. That takes our bonding to $50.6 million. So again, you can see that that would allow us to construct a more complete high school that would have a classroom building, auxiliary, or I'm sorry, a competition gym, as well as an auditorium. And so, again, that gives us a complete building, but again, it does utilize general fund dollars as well as our capital outlay. A couple of things to note on options one and two. If that level of restriction were to be needed or utilized, if we were to restrict and utilize $600,000 or $950,000, it would lead to significant cuts in our district. Right now, we have been operating with a deficit. We had almost a million-dollar deficit in fiscal year '19. We are projected to be at about a $1.1 million deficit for FY '20, and we are projecting a deficit for next year as well. So in order to address that deficit, significant cuts would be needed in either option one or option two. Option four and five, those are just a little bit different. Option four talks about restricting capital outlay dollars, but no general fund money. And you will see what our bonding capacity is there. That takes it up to about $30.4 million. That would limit our ability in terms of what we would be able to construct. There is a possibility it could get a classroom building. We're not certain about that. It could also allow us to potentially do a complete renovation of this building, or very close to it. So option four would be very much phase construction or renovation. And then option five is simply to wait, to not restrict any general fund money, not restrict any capital outlay dollars. Obviously, that pushes any construction of a high school well into the future, and it would be dependent on our bonding capacity growing to the level where a new high school could be constructed. So again, what we've tried to do with the options is to outline where we are from a bonding standpoint in each one of those, what are, what we would be able to construct in each one of those, but also what costs to taxpayers might be incurred, and also risk to the district, and what we might face with that. I do want to call your attention on each of the options on the very bottom of the page on the other notable factors. And you will notice that the very last bullet references the governor's current budget. And in the governor's current budget, there is a substantial increase in the Facilities Support Program for Kentucky. It's FSPK. Those are state dollars, and we may receive a nice increase in those state dollars, which would dramatically and positively impact our bonding. So you can see in option one, if that proposal were to pass, then our bonding would go from 45 million, 45.1, to around 49.7. So it would have a very positive impact on our bonding should that FSPK money continue to be allocated at the same level as the governor's budget. However, we don't know that yet. We're still in the early stages of the budget. The House has yet to release their version, and then it also has to go to the Senate. So we are probably mid to late April before we would know the level of FSPK funding that we might receive. Again, that would be positive. However, one thing that the increase in FSPK does not do, it does not impact our general fund. All of that additional money would go into our building fund. And so, any deficit that we incur or that we have right now would still have to be addressed, because those additional dollars would not positively impact our general fund. It may reduce the level of restriction that would be needed in any of these options. However, it does not positively impact the general fund. All right, I've tried to stay less than 10 minutes, because we were trying to stay on schedule. And, but again, we wanted to try to provide you an overview of those funding options, as well as a little general fund history that kind of shows you what our budgeting process has been, at least over the last eight to 10 years, so you can get an idea of how we have operated as a school district. And then you have, again, our expenditures. I think you also picked up packets, and they'll be referenced in other presentations from Kelly Mersick and also from Kevin Lock. So if you do have any questions about any of the information contained in what I just went over, please feel free to call or email, and I will certainly be happy to answer those questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hawkins. Next, we'll hear from Kelly Mersick from Baird.
One more thing, I'm sorry, Kelly. The very last little half-sheet on your document there, one of the things that we wanted to ensure that we do tonight is to get your feedback. And so, you will see an opportunity to be able to, if you, after hearing all of the information, if there is an option that you say, "This is the one that I really like", check it, so that we can know what your thoughts are on that. If you don't feel comfortable at the end of tonight checking any of those options, that's fine as well. But we want to hear from you. If you have ideas, suggestions, or other comments, you can write those on the back. We have some lines for you on those pages. We will have people standing at the ends of the aisles at the end of tonight, so that we can collect those from you, because we want to know what you think based on the information presented tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Kelly Mersick from Baird. Kelly is a, I'm going to let her introduce herself.
Kelly Mersick. Let's go. Thank you. Sorry, I tried everything correct. Good evening, Kelly Mersick with Baird. We're the fiscal agent, so we assist with the bonding component for the district. We're proud to work with Woodford County Schools. We work with a lot of school districts, cities, counties, utilities, and what we focus on is bonding capacity. So we don't ever provide input as far as general fund spending. Our focus is really that restricted component that's used for bonding. Um... Yes. And bonding capacity sounds a lot more complex than it really is. It's borrowing capacity. So to drill down even deeper, what borrowing capacity is, is basically your revenue available less your existing obligations. So right now on the graph, you'll see you have existing debt service payments of about $2.5 million until fiscal year 2028. The lines above represent the revenue scenarios we looked at. So the first one is the 80% capital outlay. That's a typical restricted fund scenario. In that scenario, there's about $3.2 million, $3.2 million available for debt payments. You can notice near the end, part of that line dips down. There is a funding from that FSPK that drops off in fiscal year 2039. That's held constant in all scenarios. The next line is restricting $600 from general fund, committing the capital outlay, and so forth. So the question often comes, do districts use general fund for bonding? Well, it's a very new topic. In the last general, simply, they indicated that nickels would no longer be equalized, so more districts, I don't have a number, districts aren't looking at using general fund. It is a case-by-case basis. But that's definitely a decision that's outside of my recommendation. What we provide is simply the bonding numbers that result from these bonding scenarios. We just slipped to the next page. Mr. Hawkins kind of summarized all my data. And the first is levying an additional nickel with no capital outlay commitment. In addition to the state money you receive for your building, you also receive offers of assistance. They're based on your facility plan and what your unmet need on this. Currently, you have two offers. You will receive a third one in fiscal year 2021, but your two offers right now bond about $2 million. So the state will actually make $2 million of debt service payments on your behalf. That additional nickel creates capacity of $52 million, so levying a nickel with no capital outlay creates bonding potential of $54 million. The next scenario is $600,000 from the general fund, restricting the 80% capital outlay. That $2 million from the state, these school facilities construction commission remains the same, then you have $43 million of bonding potential, so total of 45.1. If you contribute an additional $450,000 from the general fund for a total of $950,000, the bonding potential increases to 50.6. $48.6 is from local, and you still receive that SFCC funds. The last scenario is, like I said, is the traditional bonding capacity that we use, which is $2 million from the SFCC and that general restrict, that just this plane restricted budget with no general fund commitment produces $30.4 million bonding potential. This is great news for you all. Bonding capacity is actually up. Interest rates have been going down recently. I'm sure you've heard that. So these are definitely increased from our last scenarios. Moving to the next slide, it's the Facilities Support Program of Kentucky update. Capacity changes all the time. It is a funding source from the state, and it is restricted funds, as noted. It does not go to your general fund and go straight to your building fund. FSPK utilization is meant to assist districts with lower property assessments. Woodford has a strong tax base, so you don't receive a ton of money, but with the increase, the current rate is 417 per student. It looks like it could go up to 458. That's a 10% increase. It sounds not like a lot, but as far as capacity goes, it does really help your bonding The next scenario are the corresponding bonding capacities with the new FSPK funding included. And what you notice is that line at the very end, with that FSPK rate going up, you do see that there is a bigger dip when that money falls off. These are just the corresponding revenue assumptions with the new FSPK funding. Same debt service payments. So the following page, on page five, is the resulting bonding potential. One thing you'll notice is that the SFCC bonding has jumped by $200,000. There is a new offer that will be available after July 1, 2020, so that is now included in your analysis. So you'll have three offers of assistance from the state. That additional nickel bonds 56.4 million for total bonding potential of 58.6 million. The general fund, $600,000, and the capital outlay bonds 47.5. When you add that to the SFCC, you have right under $50 million of bonding potential. The 950 general fund commitment and the 80% capital outlay bonds right around 55.2 million. And the final scenario, the no general fund with 80% capital outlay results in 40.3 million capacity. Sorry, it's kind of dry. There's just so many numbers. The last is bonding capacity. It is a changing animal. There's always things that adjust bonding potential. There's legislative issues, there's other nickels. Right now, on the blue panel, we list what nickels are available. There's changes in the Facility Support Program of Kentucky, which we talked about. There's the option of leveraging more than 80% capital outlay, leveraging general fund. There's future offers of assistance that are always available. As far as expense goes, you can retire debt, refund existing issues. Unfortunately, there's not a whole lot of opportunities to refund your old current debt payments. They are what they are. There's also external factors. There's changes in ADA or interest rate fluctuations. Interest rates go up, your capacity goes down. ADA goes up, it's likely your capacity goes up. It's an ever-moving thing, so I came back in two weeks, it's likely the numbers I presented would be different from the information that's provided. That's all I have as far as the bonding potential component of this.
Thank you, Kelly. Next? I'm so sorry. Next. Next, we'll, well, next we'll hear from Kevin Lock, our architect.
I'm Kevin Lock. I'm with Ross Tarrant Architects. I'm going to go through a fairly quick, just a history of what we've done with projects so far, to give you an idea of where we are in the design process, and also talk a little bit about, very end of this, what we anticipate working against as far as what the construction inflation percent is going to be moving forward. So that affects the entire conversation quite rapidly. Okay, the first thing I want to talk about is the current schedule that we're operating under right now, and it shows that we are still in the design phase. So we are, our team, our construction managers are all working towards getting the documents ready. We are still in the design, which is kind of a discovery phase, so we're still gathering input from a lot of different folks, a lot of different people, and trying to get the documents ready for a bidding, which is currently planned on late-July bidding. And then we would actually have a bid opening in late-August. And an anticipated construction start would be right around mid-October of this year, with the completion hopefully scheduled to be in the summer of 2022. So the kids would start in the new high school in the fall semester of 2022, under the current schedule that we've got. I want to talk a little bit about how this project was kind of set up from a collaboration standpoint. When we were selected, one of the things that we were selected for, hopefully, was the fact that we're very collaborative in our approach to this. And the way that we have set up this project is we have an advisory team. That advisory team is composed of, basically, student representatives. It's also composed of some of the department heads within the school, all of major department heads, the staff in the high school, the principal, a lot of the teachers, and community representatives as well, are all part of this advisory team. Down from there, we have a leadership committee. That leadership committee is a smaller group that is composed of teachers, staff, also community and student representatives, as well as two board members are part of that leadership committee. And then of course, we have the Board of Education, which is really the ultimate decision-maker as far as moving forward. So this is just kind of where we've been and where we started in the number of advisory, leadership, and community forums that we've had. I won't go through the entire list, but they started in April, and tonight is, so that makes about at least fall 14 different times that we have had meetings. Most of these meetings, in fact, the only ones that were not public meetings were the meetings where we met with the teachers on a departmental scale. In addition to doing that, we also assisted in putting together a website. It's newwoodfordhs.com, and that website has actually had more than 3,000 individual visits to date, as of today. Some of the questions that are in that website have to do with community input. One of the questions that we got was a question about whether the existing high school is adequate for students. And 70%, actually, 72% of the people that responded out of those 277 responses said no, that it is not adequate. 5% were ambivalent, and 23% agreed that the existing high school is fine the way that it is. The next question, I don't have a slide of this, the next question said, "Would a new high school be better for the students of Woodford County moving forward in their education?" 85% of people agreed that that would be the case. And we think, well, this could have been stacked, but actually, 91% of the people that responded to this, these questions were students, parents of students, and community members. So one of the things that we've been asked to do is master plan the entire project site, which is currently located adjacent to the middle school off of Pauling Springs School Hussero. And so what you're seeing here is the master plan that we have done. You'll notice a lot of athletic fields on the site plan. Those are not in the project currently, but we had to make sure that there was room for those to fit on the site. So you're seeing baseball field, softball field, tennis courts. You're seeing a soccer practice area, as well as a multi-purpose gymnasium out there and a football stadium that would seat 2,500 people. So our option one corresponds with Scott Hawkins, option number one, and this is a full academic building that has the auxiliary gym as opposed to a competition gym. So an auxiliary gym basically is like this, but it only has about 200 to 300 seats off court. So there is approximately 1,500 seats in here currently. That is a real number. It's about 2,000, it's 1,500. So what the auxiliary gym would be is a place for the student body to meet, but when they were going to meet there, the bleachers would extend out about halfway onto the court. So that's the difference kind of between a competition gym and an auxiliary gym or an aux gym, if you hear us talk about that. The other thing this option one does not have is an auditorium. So we're showing kind of some dashlines in there where a competition gym would be, as well as an auditorium, kind of on the upper portion of the diagram that you're seeing. I won't go over all the general areas that are in here, but since the second floor, it would be a two-story building. All of the schemes that we're showing you would be a two-story building. Option two corresponds to the superintendent's option number two. This is the full build-out of the high school, and this does have a 2,000-seat competition gym in there, as well as a competition gym that would seat anywhere from 1,800 to 2,000. that would seat anywhere from 1,800 to 2,000. The spaces are roughly the same for the rest of the project, but it's important to note that all of these schemes will have a co-required storm shelter. So that's a new law that's gone into effect recently, and what we're planning on is for the music suite to function, double-function as that required storm shelter. It's a very relevant thing based on just what happened in Tennessee last night. That's the second floor of Option 2. Option 3, this is looking at making even more cuts than what we talked about in Option Number 1. So you'll notice that the middle wing there is dashed. What we are trying to do is go down as low as we can possibly go to still have a somewhat functioning high school, but the CTE, the career tech ed, functions are not in this plan. So this is about 133,000 per square feet, an estimated somewhere around $38 million. So to answer the superintendent's question, this does not work with Option 3, or 4, I think it's 4, yes, correct, sorry. 3 is the middle 4, so this would be corresponding to Option 4. And again, the second floor of Option Number 3. I want to go over, if you look at the full high school build-out, compare the spaces within the new high school with the current high school, I want to go over a few things here. Special education, that's the MBE rooms that are in the program. The current high school has about 1,300 square feet. We're providing roughly 2,600 square feet, that's about a 100% increase. As far as the culinary classrooms, that is 32, 35 currently, that's growing to 35, 80. So that's roughly 11% increase. The band orchestra and the vocal music together, so that's roughly 3,000 square feet, that's growing to almost 60% over that amount. And a part of this has to do with the fact that that band suite, that music suite is going to be part of the storm shelter. So storm shelters happen to be a certain size, and this worked out very well because the band program, the orchestra program are obviously excellent. The administration or the PE areas, 22,173 square feet currently, that would grow roughly 2% to 22,600. The administration areas would grow standard classrooms, so that's English, math, social studies, and oral languages would grow from 22,900 square feet currently to over 30,000 square feet. That's approximately 31% increase in standard classrooms. The science classrooms would grow approximately 57%, and the kitchen, 30%, and the cafeteria, roughly 46% increase. The other thing that we have been asked to do by the Board is take a look at what it would be to renovate the existing high school. And so what we've done here is a very quick study. The important thing to note here is that KDE, KDE has a maximum amount of money that you can spend on a renovation, a major renovation of a high school, and that is limited to 80% of what it would cost to build a new high school. So in our case, that comes out to roughly $35.6 million. You will not be allowed to spend any more money than that on a renovation of an existing building facility per KDE. So running this scenario, you have the existing high school, the plus loop that's currently out there, that would be relocated to the back of the high school. We would build a three-story classroom at mid-wing off where that plus loop is currently. We would recontinue the front. Second phase, we would tear down pretty much all of the classroom wings in the front where the media center is. A lot of those classrooms are subsized, substandard. A lot of the classrooms that we have, and some of the portions are about 624 square feet on average. They should be, per KDE, up to 750 square feet for a standard classroom. So this is just one option that we quickly studied. The next phase, after you demo that wing, you would build an auditorium as well as a media center, and there would be a kitchen expansion in the back because the current kitchen is very much undersized. The next thing that you would do, the leftover money that you would have, you would renovate all of the existing spaces. The space that we're in now, gymnasium, as well as the cafeteria, the kitchen, remainder of the kitchen, the music suite, the career tech ed programs would all be renovated. And those would be renovated during the summer, so there would be about four summers where you would come in and do this targeted work, because you don't want to disrupt the students. So the actual amount of disruption to the students is still going to be a major issue for renovation of this high school, but this is the best that we could come up with as to how to make this work. So you'd get that 10 to 12 weeks in the summer where you produce the work. The construction managers are sitting over there, they're shaking their head, it's going to be very difficult to do this, and this is going to take about twice as long to get done as new construction. So we're not looking at this being in operation until fall of 2024, possibly spring of 2025. So this is just a real quick view of what that particular scheme would look like. Again, we talked about the KDE maximum on that, and then we also talked about what would be new construction versus renovating costs. There gets not much money left if you build a new construction portion of this to renovate a lot of the existing facilities in the back of the building. I want to talk real quick about what we think the cost of construction inflation is going to be. I assume everybody knows what a CPI is, as I said, super price effects, it's running roughly 1.2, 1.5% right now. That is not what we're talking about. What we're talking about is the cost of construction inflation. So if you will look at where we are right now, let me catch up to my slides here real So this is a national historic, kind of where the percentages have been, starting back in 2008, beginning of the recession, it was at 6.3%, it dropped down to negative 4.0 in 2010, and it's been on a significant rise since then all the way, so it's roughly 5.6 right now. For the purposes of what we're projecting here, we are not even going with that 5%. We're dropping it down to 3.5%. So we're being ultra-conservative in what we are estimating is going to be the construction inflation cost per year. Okay? So if you look at what a new high school would cost five, 10, and 20 years down the road, you are looking at, right now, roughly a new high school would cost about $50 million full in. In 2025, that would rise to close to $60 million. In 2030, that would rise to just over $70 million. And then in 2040, it would cost close to $100 million to build a 1,350-student high And so what we've done here, and I'm going to ask Kelly to help me out a little bit, because this is a graph comparing what the bonding potential is versus that construction cost inflation that we just talked about.
Thank you, Kevin. On this, the gold bars represent the bonding potential, and what we did is we just focused on the district component of the capacity. So as I highlighted in my presentation, you all received some support in the form of school facilities construction commission offers. Unfortunately, those offers expire if you don't use them, so we just wanted to isolate, that would create some noise in the graph, so we just looked at the district capacity component of this. We also stripped out capital outlay and just looked at the current restricted vulnerable revenue with no growth. When you submit a finance plan for KDE for any project, they do not assume any growth in your revenue. They assume what you have for bonding today is what you'll have for 20 years. So we held that constant in all four scenarios presented above.
Thank you, Kelly, I appreciate it. And that concludes my presentation. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you guys so much. Next, we're going to get into our question and answer session. As you know, you were requested to submit questions online if you wanted, or questions tonight. We've got very many, so we'll see how we get through them. I'm so happy that we have someone here that's going to help us moderate this question, period. Her name is Pam Thomas, and I'm going to read a short bio. Pam is a senior fellow at the Kentucky Center for Economic Policy. Prior to joining KCEP, Pam was the committee staff administrator for the Appropriations and Revenue Committee of the Kentucky General Assembly. Pam has extensive experience in the areas of tax policy, budgeting, education finance, and workforce policy. Pam also spent some time with the State Justice Cabinet with a focus on juvenile justice, policy development, budgeting, and strategic planning. She has a law degree from the University of Kentucky and a BES in business from St. Bonaventure University in New York. She lives in Midway with her husband and enjoys spending time with family, traveling, and riding bicycles. And I know she also has some moderation experience, moderator, but I don't have that copy, so I'm going to let you explain that. Before she does that, I do want to say that I don't anticipate that we will get through all the questions, but I know she'll help us move along as most possible. If you have follow-up questions, you can send them to me or the superintendent, and we will get back with you on those. We also hope to have another type of forum and get to the rest of the questions at that time in the future. So I'll turn it over to Pam.
Hello, everyone. As was noted, I'm here to help try to move the process along a little bit. And before we start with the questions, I just want to say a few things about what the goal of tonight is. And I want to make sure that everyone understands the focus of the meeting. There have been presentations from everyone about the bonding capacity, about the school's budget situation, about the high school and the various plans and options that are on the table, and how all of those things combine, and the options of how to pay for it. And the board members and the people who did the presentations are going to be available to answer questions that you have about the proposal. There have been several opportunities over the past year for input, for community input. And before I say anything more too, I just wanted y'all to know that I haven't been involved in any of this at all. I didn't know anything about what was going on until last week when I was contacted to do this, and I didn't get the questions until I got here right before the forum. So it may be that some of the questions will be repetitive, and I apologize for that, but I haven't really had the time to look at it. But I think the most important thing to remember is that the goal of everyone here tonight is to get some questions answered, because it's hard to make decisions about the future of our community when your questions haven't been answered, and so that is the primary goal. And a way to facilitate that, I think the session tonight is supposed to last until 8:30, and there were 50 questions submitted in advance. And so the likelihood, as noted previously, that we're going to get through all of that tonight is not very high. But you have had opportunities in the past, there have been 13 steering committee meetings, there are board meetings where public comments are allowed in, and there was a public forum last summer. And it's also possible for anyone to contact any of the board members using the contact information on the website, if you want to do that directly. So as I said, tonight the focus is going to be on trying to answer questions. And I'm going to start with the questions that were submitted in advance, and many of the questions relate to the same subject or topic, and so there has been an attempt to try to categorize them and group them in ways where they won't be quite as repetitive. And so if you did submit a question in advance and you don't hear what you submitted read verbatim, know that, like I said, a lot of the questions were very similar, and so I will try to summarize them into questions so as not to repeat myself too many times. And I want to ask the folks who will be responding, who are all of you here, I think that there are probably some questions that more than one of you will want to respond to, because I think there are some differing opinions among the folks that are here. And if that's the case, please remember that our goal tonight is to try to get as much information out as possible, try to stick to the factual responses if you can. As moderator, I'm going to ring you in a little bit if you tend to go off just because we don't have time for that in this forum tonight. So just please keep that in mind and help me do that in an effective way so that the folks that are here can get as much usable information as they can. So I'm going to start now with the questions. And the first couple, I think maybe for the folks from Baird. What percentage of schools use their capital outlay funds for construction, and do other
My apologies, okay. After that, can you just repeat the question, just to make sure? I'm happy to come up there if that would be better.
Technology is... All right, so what I'm going to do is walk around and hand this to people, that technology has been the name of my existence this week, I can say that. So for Baird, what percentage of schools use their capital outlay fund for construction, and do any other schools restrict general fund for bonding?
This is a hard question to answer, because I have to generalize, but there's 172 school districts. When we calculate bonding capacity, we always take into consideration 80% of capital outlay, because that's what's permitted for KDE, unless the district informs us not to use capital outlay. But I would say most districts have very little capacity if they do not commit capital outlay to their project. Second question regarding general fund, as I noted earlier, there was some legislation change in the last session that eliminated some state-matching funds. Using, utilizing general fund for bonding is now becoming more of a tool. In fact, there are some projects that have to be bonded from the general fund for athletic, so it's a case-by-case. Let me just speak on what percentage, it's just unrealistic for me to provide that number. But I could research with KDE to see if they were able to give me better guidance on that.
Thank you for that. The next question, I'm not sure if it's for you or...
I think we have been hearing from different people in the community that there are school districts that are bonding schools this way, bonding new schools this way, and I just wondered if Mr. Hawkins or Amy Smith could speak on that.
We have been in contact with the Kentucky Department of Education. They had indicated about six school districts have utilized at least a little bit of general fund money for a project. I contacted five of those six over the last couple of days. None of them have utilized general fund to build a new high school. They have done it for a renovation, they've done it for a smaller project of some type, and the ones that I contacted indicated that their restriction was about a half a percent of their general fund budget. And so compared to the 600,000 to 950,000, that would be anywhere from 2% to 3% of our general fund budget.
Okay, the next question is, how does our bonding capacity and contingency fund compare with schools across the state?
As I said before, there's 172 school districts. Each district has their own funding. They have one local nickel, two local nickels, or they equalize on one or two. So there's a whole variety of factors. Our district holding back capacity for a future project, so to generalize what bonding capacity is in average is really hard, but to say, I feel confident saying that most districts do not have more than $15 million of bonding potential. That's a, that is a safe estimate, there's just a lot of smaller districts and the capacity is limited. Second question regarding contingency, that's a case-by-case. That's really the administration of the Board's direction as far as contingency. You see very high contingencies for some districts, you see very low. It's kind of all across the board on that one.
Thank you. This is going back to the last question.
The information on the restricted funds being used, we did see that McCracken County restricted $450,000 a year to build a middle school, and then I had a chance to speak with Fayette County's chairman of their board, and she said... with Fayette County's chairman of their board, and she said that they used restricted funds to build Frederick Douglass, so I'm not sure... And I, just a follow-up on that.
We need to be clear on Fayette County, that was a cash-only contribution of their general fund. That was not used for a bond payment. And so it's not uncommon for districts to utilize cash to be able to lower the amount that they have to bond, but Frederick Douglass was not... Frederick Douglass was not utilizing the general fund dollars for, to make bond payments.
Okay, the next couple of questions relate to options one and two. If the board continues to move forward with option one or two, will the board address... Test, test. Okay. I think, here we go. Let's see how many challenges we can have. I'm going to start over. If the board continues to move forward with options one or two, will the board address the budget deficit, or will it be left to the new board coming on in January 2021, consisting of possibly three new board members? I don't know who wants to take that one. All right.
Absolutely. The current board is going to address any deficits or any budget revisions that will occur if we choose option one or two. The answer is very simple, yes, we would.
And I also think it's important to note that, as the superintendent recommended at our last meeting, we don't have to have budget cuts to the classroom, or to the students, or to the general fund at all. All we have to do is make one cut, which is to unrestrict this money that we set aside for the high school and put it back into the general fund. Then we need no more cuts.
I think Mr. Wilson said it very eloquently in November. If we, I think we will address the cuts. We're working with the superintendent to get good information so we can make thoughtful decisions on this, what could be cut without a big impact, and therefore help determine the best path forward. I will say, too, that if three board members leave, I'll be, I may be one of them, I'm up for election this year, and so I'll speak for myself. I don't want to leave deficits, but I also don't want to leave a 60-year-old high school that I came in with, when I came in 11 years ago, with no path, no thought, no plan to address. And every year, our students go through another year with this feeling that it's not adequate for them, is not up to what they deserve. So the choices, I think Mr. Wilson said in November, are not good. Like, there are no perfect choices here, there's no one exact right answer, and we don't want to leave a deficit, but we also want to have a plan for the biggest need in our community.
Okay, moving on then to the next question. Now that we have a better understanding of the risks involved with restricting general fund dollars, what is the harm of trying the nickel tax again before moving forward with the current plan? If this is timed correctly, there would be no additional cost associated with the nickel. Does anyone want to answer that?
So the additional cost for another nickel election would not, I think it would only be incurred if we chose to try and do forms like this and do printed materials. We have had representatives from the petition committee come to public meetings and say, we will petition again. We have already formed our committee. It would have to go on the general ballot in November to be voted on, unless we did a special election. And I actually, not sure of the timeframe, I'd have to sit down and count the days on the calendar, because there have to be a specified number of days to allow for the petition, and then another specified day, amount of days to allow for the certification of the petition. I had a community member reach out to me and ask what my stance was on the nickel tax, and I will say the nickel tax is the best way to build a high school. That is unquestioned. My question is, what has changed in our community that would allow people to pass the nickel tax? And I said, you know, we have polling information from the different voting sites, so we know where it passed and where it failed, and if there was an inclination to reach out to people who had said, I voted against it, but I would vote for it this time because of X, Y, Z, and bring that as a tangible change of thought to the board, and as evidence that there has been a change enough to overcome the deficit that we lost by, I would absolutely be on board with doing a nickel tax again.
If the superintendent recommended doing a nickel tax, and there was some motion on the floor to implement it, I would support that. However, quite honestly, I must say, I don't feel confident that the nickel tax, nickel tax...
And Mr. Hawkins, do you want to weigh in on...
I would just say that this forum is something that really should have been held about a year ago. We need to be open to all topics, all ideas, all options. We need to look at the pros and cons and the consequences of each, and that's certainly one of the options in our packet. And so I would advocate for us to put a stop on what we're doing right now and look at all of the options, including this, you know, possibility of a nickel. Look at all five options that we've been given tonight and take community input, and really start this process from the beginning and do it right.
I would just say that, you know, when we were doing the nickel last time, we ran into a lot of kind of logistic issues that we had to deal with. I think clearly, like Ms. Bradley said, it would be ideal to, if we do it, and Mr. Hawkins brings it to us with a timeline that would let the election happen in a general election as opposed to funding a special election. The one thing, curiously, that we ran up against with that and were requested by the fiscal board even, was please don't do that, because the general election is in November, the tax bills go out in October, November, so that would require a second tax billing. So that probably is not as costly as a special election, but it does not come without costs. And I don't know that those would be costs that would keep us from doing it, but I think just for the point of accuracy, we can't say that, like this question does, that there are no costs associated with it.
Is there anyone else who wants to weigh in on that question? We have a few more questions about the nickel. The next one is, if the nickel tax is approved, I guess assuming that that was the option that was taken, please explain how and when the nickel tax would end.
So this is definitely something that we had to address last time, and it was a bit of a point of contention for people that weren't supportive. And the Kentucky statute does not allow for a school board to put an end date on that nickel tax. There's no sunset provision allowable by law, so the nickel would stay in place. It doesn't automatically fall off at the end of the project when the high school or whichever building you're using it for is built. It stays in place. A future board could choose to remove that nickel, but I think Mr. Hawkins made the point that it's awfully hard to speak for a future board when all of our buildings would be 20 years older, and their needs would need to be kept in mind at that point. But they stay in place until a board takes action to remove them and change that tax amount.
I think one additional point to that question is that the money cannot be spent on anything that we want. A nickel facilities tax is restricted dollars, and it can only be used on new construction or renovation. And to the point of the nickel, is it the best option? It is the best option, because it not only allows you to deal with your immediate needs, but it positions you to deal with any future needs, and I think that's an important point to make.
Okay, this next question, I believe, relates to the prior vote for the nickel. Did we, as a community, lose possible funding contributions by a no vote to the nickel tax in June of 2018? And if so, is there a possibility of regaining that funding?
In the 2018 budget, the legislature did not include equalization for any district that passed a facilities nickel. There are some districts now that are petitioning the legislature to go back and reinstitute that equalization for districts who passed it in 2018 and 2019. That has not occurred. So unless there would be some type of legislative action, districts who missed out on the equalization would not be allowed to go back and get it.
And that is, having been the head of the staff for the Budget Committee for over 20 years, that equalization is something that districts don't know about until the legislature does the budget every year. Once they do the equalization for the levies, it goes on. But with the new levies, they decide it every two years, and districts never can count on it when they impose the levy. So I just wanted to make that clear. This next question, is it possible to provide a table to show an estimate of how much homeowners would pay for the nickel tax based on their home values? The information is up there, and I'm guessing that most of you can't see that, but I've just been told that they can put it on their website so that you can see that information.
So this graph is only representative of what the nickel was in 2018, and for a house valued at $150,000, the annual impact would be $83. A house valued at $250,000, the annual impact would be $138. And what Mr. Hawkins was saying is that those amounts would be different based on what we have to do with today's current values.
So I think I should preface the next question. It says, can this decision be put on the ballot like the tax funding option was? And so I think what we're talking about is the decisions to do other things other than a nickel, and whether or not it can be put on the ballot, although I'm not sure from the question. Does anyone want to take a stab at that?
That's how I read it as well, that the idea of restricting money, general fund money, could be put on the ballot because we were going to use it to build a new high school. The reason that the nickel tax was on the ballot was not necessarily because we were going to use it to build a new high school, it was because it went over the 4% we're allowed to raise in revenue every year, and so it was recallable and went on the ballot. It wasn't, it wasn't because we were going to build a new high school. So I think the answer to that is no. Unless the school board raises a tax rate that's going to raise more than 4% revenue in one year, it is not recallable.
I'm going to change topics now for a few questions, and I think it has to do with planning for the school going forward. Would funding option one or two allow the board to provide raises for other staff members not included in the proposal?
I think it's clear that if we do funding option one or two, we are in a deficit situation. So not only do we not have money for raises, but we will be making cuts to the tune of a million or so dollars. So fiscal year 19 ended a million dollar, around a million dollar deficit. This fiscal year is on track to end over a million dollar deficit, and in our budget forecast for the year we're right now planning for, for fiscal year 21, we're looking at a deficit of 1.7 million. So definitely no raises and definitely lots of cuts.
Like a lot of things going on right now in the legislature, we don't know yet. I think, you know, if we have this same forum at the end of April, or I guess the end of April is the final veto time, we may have very different information. There, raises for teachers, if they pass from the governor as proposed, it's correct that they will not cover other staff employees. I am hoping that they will revise that, that's my personal opinion, to cover everybody. But as far as, if we do restrict money, there's no doubt we'll have to make cuts, we're working with Mr. Hawkins on that. We, but I'm not sure that even, I'm still, we're still trying to get a handle on our budget as far as even if we don't make these restrictions, if we'll have extra money for raises.
And the way that those raises work in the governor's plan is it's $2,000 for teachers that are teaching on a date certain, and it doesn't go into the salary schedule or the SIC formula, so it's a separate sort of, almost like a bonus, but it is a permanent increase for that teacher as long as the teacher continues to teach, if they were a teacher on that specific date. That's what the governor proposed, just to clarify what that is. And as Debbie noted, there were no, there was no money in there for increases for folks that are not teachers in the governor's proposal. And so then the next question, I believe, is for the board members. Do you currently have a written financial plan for constructing a new high school? And if so, where can we locate the document? The document is extremely important since our district is in uncharted waters. Anyone?
I would say that our documented financial plan, and Amy can speak to this more completely, but the BG1 shows how we're, what pools of money we're taking things from and the funding sources that we're using for the proposed new school. So that would be the document that I would reference. So the BG1 is kind of the, it's the document that schools or government entities submit to the state saying, here's what we would like to build, here's our funding sources for it, and it's a kind of a living and breathing document that's modified over the course of a project. Kelly can probably talk specifics more than that, but it's, we have BG1s, BG2s, BG3s, and they come back and forth before the board. We just had a BG5 for the completion of the wheelchair lift in the choir room, and so it's a document that's submitted to KDE and then back to the school if they have recommendations or alterations, but that would be the most complete source of the funding for this specific project.
And I would say a BG1 is not really a financial plan. So in my mind, a financial plan, we do not have that for this school project at all. You know, to be honest, I think... You know, to be honest, I think the public has asked for a financial plan for a number of months. I know I have asked for a written plan. I feel like you have to have a written financial plan so that you can look at where you are and what the consequences of your actions are. And when we're talking about, you know, a $35, $36 million school, the BG1 is for $36 million and it says we're going to take it out of general fund, which is not a good funding source. That takes it directly from your classrooms and teachers and then also uses some of our cash on hand. And then the other point I would make is that even though we approved a BG1 for a $36.2 million school, in December, we approved a schematic for an over $50 million school. So the plan would need to address where are you getting those extra millions and millions of dollars? And again, I would go back to the point for me for tonight's forum is so that we can gather information from you all so that we can make a written plan, so that we can say, you know, does this make sense? How does this impact our budget, short term and long term? But there is no written plan.
I agree with Sheri, there's nothing in one document. We are working with the superintendent, we've made numerous requests, and I think we're getting some information coming. It is a long process. We're working in our budgeting process right now. A very big part of this plan will be to identify what cuts we need to make and if those cuts are palatable to us. As soon as we can sit down and collaborate on that, I think a plan will be forthcoming. We do have, you know, we've had projections, we've had the things we've offered tonight. We'll know more when the legislature ends to put numbers on the things that Kelly referenced as far as bonding. So a lot of this stuff is fluid and we'll hope to continue to get the information out as we're able to collect it. Now moving into some future thoughts and plannings with regards to facilities needs. Do the construction plans for the new high school take into account the estimated growth in population of Woodford County due to new home construction as well as increased tax income generated from new homeowners?
Okay, that'd be great. So KDE actually does not allow you to take into account future home growth. So what we, basically what KDE does is they look at a six-year projection based on information from the data center located at the University of Louisville. That is what is determining the size of the school building itself. Now, every building that we design, though, does have room for expansion. There are options to expand different wings in the options that we presented. That would allow for additional growth.
I was on the district facilities plan when we, you have to do that every so often for so many years, and KDE actually approves that plan. So when we had that planning process, we were approved by KDE for a 1,400 student high school, which does allow for some growth. I don't think any of the documents that were provided by the architect are for a 1,400 student high school. I believe that since that was on our facilities plan, that allows us to have more square footage, that allows us to have a bigger building, that allows us to have growth potential. I believe that that's what the current school plan should include. And there was absolutely no discussion with the board about that changing, no discussion as far as I know with the administration about that changing. So I feel like to have a 1,400 student high school, which is on our facilities plan approved by KDE, makes more sense and would get us more square footage and allow us to have some growth.
And I do think it would be nice to have the opportunity for us to meet with KDE to have that discussion and to be able to show them some of the building that's taking place right now. Because that was part of what we had to submit with our facilities plan. We had to get a letter from Planning and Zoning that indicated that we may be experiencing some growth. So I do think it would be good for us to have that opportunity. I think the other thing that we have to keep in mind, if we do experience growth, and Woodford County has been somewhat static in our student population, however, there are some new developments that are occurring with some potential other developments on the horizon in the next four to five years. What does that mean for other, for our other elementary schools? What does that mean for our middle school? And so if, while that may or may not happen, I think we have an obligation to prepare for that. And so if you were to utilize option one or option two, that pretty much takes all of your bonding. So would you have the ability to address any future growth if that were to occur? And so again, that just has to be talked about, it has to be discussed, it has to be planned for so that we can have a true understanding of what we may be facing in the next five to 10 years.
I don't want to belabor this, but when you do a district facility plan, it looks out four years in advance. So that four-year period, they are going to allow a higher number. But when you go and submit a BG1, it's based on the capacity that year. That's why it dropped down to 1,350. I will add that the building that we're planning for the new high school is approximately 25,000 gross square feet larger than this facility, and it does have plans for expansion.
And I would only add that Mr. Locke did tell the board when that came from KDE in a board meeting that they had adjusted it down from 1,400 to 1,350. That was in one of our board meetings.
Can the board be more specific about the need for the new high school? What are the costs of maintaining the high school for the next 10 years or over time? That's a fairly general question.
I bet there'll be other board members that want to talk about the need for a new high school, but I'll start. Excuse me. You know, we always say safety first, so maybe I'll start with safety. The new building designs today are very cognizant of all the dangers that our students face, whether they be, we often hear about the violent acts, but then just as Kevin had also described, we have to have storm shelters now, so we have to have hallways that are wide enough that they don't, you know, maybe fire, getting out for any kind of thing is much easier, much safer, up to code. So the safety thing is a big thing. And again, people think of school shootings, but there's many other parts of school safety that a new updated building that met code would address. Also, just, I'll let someone else, I know there's many factors.
Hello, my name is Ryan Alvee. I'm a current senior at the high school and I'm the, I was a part of the leadership committee that Mr. Locke discussed earlier. During that process, I remember very specifically that we had a whole meeting in which we discussed a lot about safety features. And as a senior, I've attended the school all four years of my high school career, and I can tell you that there's been multiple occasions in which we've had safety issues such as mold or animals or bugs. And that's not an environment you want to learn in. At the same time, not only just safety, but there's lots of different factors that go into our education. And if you look around this building, there's not a lot of light. Natural light is very helpful to our ability to focus and our ability to participate in class. And as we designed and discussed, a lot of these new and more modern ideas were put into place for this plan. This would allow for a lot of the issues that we see here at the high school every day, for students like me, for future students, to not have to deal with the burden or the fear that one day maybe our high school will be worse than it already is. So there's always going to be a need for a new high school, especially after one that's been around for almost 60 years. And it's just, I can't say it any other way other than I've experienced the need and the expectation of what it's like to be a high schooler. And in a building like this, there's a lot of need for improvement, and especially in a district such as ours, which we are so academically talented and have great teachers, great staff, great students. It's only fair that we encourage that growth and that commitment to excellence that we pride ourselves on. And I think the best way to do that is provide an accurate facility to promote that.
That was very well put. And I absolutely believe and would love to have a new high school. However, I think what it comes down to is a want versus a need. I want to have a new high school. I want you to have all of those wonderful facilities and all those things. But when you're talking about you only have money in your general fund, which, let me read what general fund is for. General fund dollars are used for operational costs such as salaries, maintenance, instructional resources, student transportation, utilities and insurance. So when you are taking money from the classroom, from the students, from the teachers, from the general fund to build the building, you have to decide what's a want and what's a need. And I think, you know, at this point, we're talking about cutting a million dollars out of your classroom. You know, that could be your athletics, your academics, your SROs. That could be your teachers, your teacher aides. That could be your Chromebooks. That could be your engineering classes. So you just have to decide between a want and a need.
Anybody else want to comment on that?
Oh, yeah, the 10 years.
I think part of the question was what we would need to do to maintain the building for the next 10 years. Obviously, we're going to need a roof replacement during that time frame, more than likely an HVAC replacement during that time frame, in addition to some other upgrades to facilities within, within the building.
The next question, has the school board done a SWOT analysis of the development, the development of the new high school? If so, what did you identify as the weaknesses and threats in the plan? And if not, would the board be willing to do an exercise to demonstrate to the community that you thoroughly considered all of the unintended consequences and identified possible solutions for them?
The answer is we have not done this specific exercise, but I would absolutely be willing to do it. Obviously, I can only speak for myself, but any type of learning opportunity like this, I would be willing to participate in.
Anyone else want to chime in on that one? Okay. If a new school were not built now, is the question of a new high school development still on the table? And if so, what would be the plan to fund the development? Not sure. I think that question maybe has already been answered? Or, as I said, I just got these, so I didn't have a chance to vet them in any way.
I think that the new high school has been the number one need on our facility plan for at least eight years. It is part of our comprehensive district improvement plan, contains factors and goals and improvements needed to the learning environment in the high school. So it is very much on the forefront of what we have said is important to us. Whether there will be another, there has been no other plan other than this one presented to the board. Obviously, we know the nickel tax is the best thing. That has not been presented to us. So, but I would say that with it being the top of our district improvement plan and on our CDEV, it is going to remain a current topic.
I would just say that I do believe that there should be some sort of a plan developed. And I think we've been given some options tonight that really kind of look at the pros and the cons. I believe that, you know, other districts plan quite often for major things like safety tax or facilities tax or new buildings. And there's a process that you can go through, working with groups like the Pritchard Committee, where you sit down and you look at the big questions and you look at how you get there. And I think we skipped all of those steps. And so honestly, I think it would be a great idea if we had some sort of a, you know, community kind of group along with the administrators of the school and students and parents where we started at the beginning of this process, just scrap everything up till now, start at the beginning and do it right.
Anyone else weighing in on that one? Okay. For each of the five options, I would like to know what school year the new high school will be ready for space. I understand this is a difficult question to estimate for each option and that some options will be more difficult than others. However, I would like to know what the best guess is for opening date under the options.
So we're at a pretty critical juncture right now as far as when we can start construction because right now we're looking at construction starting in mid-October. So obviously, the first thing that you're going to do is you're going to start scraping the ground excavation work, utility works, things like that. You don't want to be doing that in the dead of winter or the rainy season. So if we start in middle October, right now, we are good. If we delay, we'll probably delay about five, six months or so to get into the good weather. So where we are right now is the numbers that I gave you on my presentation. And all of the schemes for the new high school would have the students getting in there fall of 2022. If we delay anymore, it would be January of 2023. And obviously, you don't want to be moving during the Christmas break, so then there's a likelihood, although it can be done, it's better to move to a new facility in the summer. If you're looking at the renovation of the existing high school, we're looking at the fall of 2024 or the spring of 2025. And that is just a guess. At this point, we have not done any sort of extensive research into a renovation of the existing high school.
I'm going to let you stay right here and ask you another question. And I'll ask it while you're getting your notes. Under option one that includes phases, what are the phases and what mechanism ensures that later phases would actually occur, especially if cost overruns happen within phase one?
So option one is the one where we're doing the auxiliary gym and we're not doing the auditorium. Well, I think that kind of is one in the same as far as we try to match them up as best we could. So if you go ahead and do option one right now, I don't know what the financial impacts or when the money would be available to do a future phase for that high school. I will tell you this, that it's cheaper to build all in one phase as opposed to breaking out into several phases. That would increase the cost of the overall infrastructure plus the time.
Another option one question, but I'm not sure this one is for you. Under option one, what additional actions will be necessary for school functions to occur with separated facilities? Will students be transferred between locations? And if so, have the extra time and costs been determined?
I do know that, you know, currently our high school is located here, but many of the activities that our students participate in are at the football field, the softball fields. So of course, with a school built closer to that, some of those transportation needs may diminish. I'm not sure if kids can get there without a bus or a car. They could walk, but my understanding from Mr. Hawkins, and I'll ask him to elaborate on this, is that we don't really run many buses from here to there now. So I'm not sure if we would run buses from the new high school back to this gym for those, for those activities. I think it's just a lot of kids have cars, so I mean, if you could just kind of tell us exactly what's happening now, that might help answer this question.
I'm not sure I can tell you exactly what high school students do after school, but yeah, I mean, we may not want to answer that question. But there is some, some transportation for some sports that occur now to get to falling springs. That would still continue to occur because until your athletic facilities would be on your campus, there would still be some transportation there. There probably would be some... There probably would be some additional transportation to come back here for some particular events or practices after school. So there may be a slight increase, but I don't think it would be, it definitely wouldn't be any less, but could have a slight increase to that.
How about really studying the phase in construction of a new high school? I would think you could have a ninth-grade school at the old building, keep the gym, and build a slim-down new high school. If you did this, you could still move the board into the old high school. Anyone want to comment on that?
So I actually got this question beforehand because it was going to take some research. So if you were looking at this being a ninth-grade center and a new school being a 10th through 12th, I'm not going to speak to what that does to the student body or how teachers travel back and forth if they're teaching both freshmen and sophomores and juniors and seniors. But well, you would think that the cost of a new high school, if it was a 10-12 as opposed to a 9-12, would go down by 25%. That's not really the case. And the reason is, is that you would probably want to go ahead and design the common spaces, things like the gym, the cafeteria, the kitchen, those things, to be able to expand. They would be designed for ultimately the full facility, a 9 through 12. So I've looked at what it would cost initially. If you took everything down to a thousand-student 10-12 center, and you would save approximately $9.3 million in construction cost. But if you decided to go ahead and build the common spaces like I talked about for the 1350, that would reduce the savings that you would get down to $7.2 million over the current scheme. And then I'll let somebody else talk about how that affects the school.
I will say, when I saw this question, I think it's an interesting question. It is not something that we had looked at specifically with thinking of leaving ninth graders here and moving the other grades. We did talk about phase construction and overwhelmingly heard from the community that it was not something that was of interest. Our teachers weren't supportive of it. The community wasn't supportive. The students weren't crazy about the idea. So have we comprehensively looked at it as far as measuring community interest? I think we have. I think we heard that. I think it's an interesting idea, and I think that we've discussed something along these lines. And I think Mr. Hawkinson may have thoughts to share on how that would impact the dynamic between the different grade levels not being in the same building.
I think anytime that you have a single grade in a building, it becomes problematic. And a lot of it is due to the fact that our middle school, they already can take so many high school courses there. And so you have a large number of students who are in classes with sophomores. And so what do you do in that kind of situation? So again, while I think it's an interesting concept, I think you have to look at your individual situation to see, does that fit what we do as a school district right now? It may work in some areas. I don't know that that would be an effective plan here.
Anyone else on that question? Another idea for something else to consider. Perhaps there are some options to prolong the use of the high school. Can a partnership with KCTCS be forged to bring students into that building, maybe advanced classes? Any thoughts on that?
I'm not sure of the specifics of this exact question. We do currently offer dual-credit classes with a number of different universities, Midway, Morehead, KCTCS, Sullivan, and I'm positive I'm forgetting some. So as far as reaching out to them specifically and trying to move students into the KCTCS building, I'm not aware that they actually have classes. I don't think they do have classes because we have a KCTCS employee sitting here shaking her head no. So I don't know that that's an option for the for-sales location.
I am curious about more long-term funding plans for not only the development of a new high school, but the sustainability of current school maintenance and programs for students, including but not limited to school resource officers, educational staff, school nurses, and enhancement programs. Then the questioner asks for a five-, 10-, and 15-year plan, which I don't think anyone could do tonight, but does anyone on the board want to respond to that at all?
I would say that, I guess, a good question for Kelly is, looking forward, if the FSPK offer does come in at the governor's amount right now, our bonding capacity is significantly different than what we currently have. And with lessen the amount that we need to keep restricted, is it possible to adjust that back to only what would be required to make a bond payment? And with the specifics of this question, I don't think that any board member has an interest in cutting school safety measures or cutting school nurses. I think that we're looking at budgeting questions that are further outside that realm. Again, only speaking for myself, but is that a possibility to lessen that restriction or amend the?
Not an attorney, but I believe the last, you all passed a resolution to restrict those funds. I believe that would need to be amended, ratified, and then a new resolution would be passed to take into consideration what's needed just to make the bond payments. I don't, from my end, I don't see that being problematic.
And again, I would just say, you shouldn't be using general fund dollars, taking that from the classroom to build a building. And it's just about priorities at this point. So if you don't want to have those cuts, that five-page list of expenses that could be cut that Mr. Hawkinson shared with us, then we don't have to. All we have to do is unrestrict this money, put it back in the budget, and then you don't have to have those cuts.
I think anytime that you look at a five-, 10-, 15-year plan, the first thing that you would probably want to take into account is that our newest building is 15 years old, 16 years old now, because the middle school opened in January of 2004. And so just knowing that you are going to have some other needs that come up during that five-, 10-, 15-year period, how do you prepare for those if you have limited bonding? And so again, I think that has to be part of the conversation. When you sit down and you look at options and you determine the best path forward, those are things that have to be considered and discussed so that you can be prepared in the event that those updates and upgrades need to be made during that five-, 10-, 15-year period.
Anyone else on that one? These next two are somewhat related and relate to options one or two. Under options one and two, which appear will require cuts to current positions and services, what is the board's deadline to make cuts and how will notifications occur?
Again, and I know I'm repeating myself, we have received, and I think it's been very educational for the community to list of what makes up our general fund expenditures. Right now, there's nothing that Mr. Hawkinson's recommended. He's recommended a few cuts that our positions or services are specifically, let me speak to positions. The technical answer to that is that we would have to let people know by April. Am I correct if their position was going to end? There has been no talk of cutting positions. I'm one board member. We're still waiting for a really good collaborative talk about expenses. We're on our way to do that. But if positions were cut, that would be in April. Our next budget, statutory budget time is May. Hopefully, we would have a good budget put together by then. The final budget we have to have by law is in September, but I think we all realize that it's too late to give people or schools notice of any cuts they might have. So I guess that's the timeline is April and then hopefully May for our next budget.
And again, I would say that the superintendent has given us a comprehensive list of programs and services that can be cut, and I think you guys have an attachment that talks about those. Right. And so that those current programs and services that would need to be cut by a deadline are listed here, and the superintendent has made a recommendation about that. And the recommendation is that we restore the general fund, and then we don't have to have those cuts. There would be no deadline because there would be no need for cuts.
I'm reading this question to see if I can say it out loud. Not because it's seen anything, but just because I want to make sure that I understand it. Okay. The question is for the board. There was much discussion around the possibility of not taking the tax generating 4% more revenue for fiscal year 2021 during the approval of the January draft budget. The budget narrowly passed 3-2, which is worrisome given the board is moving forward with a $52 million high school. What is the board's plan if the tax doesn't pass in September? I'm not sure what tax that's referring to. Does anybody else?
Well, I think, just to clarify, I think we set our tax rates in August. And last August, we, it was a narrow vote. We had two members who voted against raising the 4%, which honestly would have cost us, probably reduced our revenue more than restricting what we did this year. So I think there is a little history and a little worry about that, that maybe it wouldn't pass in the future. But I think that's what they're talking about is if this coming August for the 2021's year, what is our plan if we don't pass the 4% revenue tax? I think that's really what the question is referring to.
And to be honest, I do believe that the two board members that voted against the draft budget recommendation made by the chief finance officer and the superintendent should explain, you know, or give us a written plan that shows how you can move forward with the $52 million high school if you don't take that recommended tax rate in September. Because I would love to have a new high school and keep the taxes flat, and if there's a plan to do that, I believe they should share it with us all.
I think on this one, the other point that is relevant is in what Ms. Elin has said about taking a good look at our expenses. I think every time that we do take that 4% tax increase in August, we're asking the community to take a look at their expenses so that they can pay an increase, not a 4% increase, but an amount that allows for a 4% revenue increase for the schools. So I think we should, as stewards of taxpayer money, be willing to take a look at our expenses as well.
The tax increase, the 3-2 vote, I don't know what Ms. Brinkett's referring to, but last year I did vote to increase taxes so we could have it for the general fund. Recently, I voted no when it came to the draft budget because it was my feelings, my understanding and belief that you should build a budget not with tax increase revenues. You should build it on what happens if you don't get the money, just so in case if you don't have it, you will have a plan. That's the reason I voted no. I don't think that we should build a budget on tax increases that may or may not happen in the fall.
And I would just say that, to be clear, we did not have deficit spending in this district until we restricted the money for the high school. So our general fund, our tax rate, our tax revenue is more than sufficient to pay our expenses. We've lived very conservatively. The deficit started when we took that money out of our general fund and set it aside for this high school. And so in order to balance that, all we have to do is put that money back in.
All right. We've got, by the way, just about 10 minutes left, so there's only going to be a few more questions. And I still have several questions on the submitted before list that we are not going to get to. And I apologize to those of you that submitted questions before and aren't going to get to hear your questions read, but we are constricted by time, and you have been told that there will be another forum to answer the questions.
The other thing that I wondered about in looking at all the questions that we are going to get to tonight is whether or not it would be possible to make sort of an FAQ that we could each respond to some of these questions and share. I hate to not provide an answer, but you know, some of these questions, Mr. Hawkinson could definitely answer, and maybe we can share those online on the district website.
I think with the level of complexity of these questions, I think it would be best to do it in person, personally. And again, that's my, that's my belief is that. Because it's much easier to explain verbally than it is to try to answer, especially when it comes to complex issues like school finance. When you're trying to answer those in writing, it's not always easy. So I think we could maybe, there may be some that we could do that way, but just looking at the questions, I think it would be best if those could be answered like we've done tonight.
All right. A couple of questions, kind of thinking about more community input and involvement and how the information that is gathered in the forum will be used. Would the Woodford County Board of Education consider appointing a community group to plan, fundraise, and coordinate information to develop a plan for board consideration?
I think that's a great idea. That would be wonderful. And again, I go back to, this forum should be held at the beginning. We need your input. We need your buy-in. We need to build a school, but we need to do it right. We don't need to do it on a foundation that's shaky, a foundation where the superintendent and chief finance officer have been excluded, a foundation where you have a divided board, a foundation where you don't have the level of funding to build the quality of school that you want to get. So to have the community to take that first step and get consensus and buy-in and ideas and to really listen, to have a forum where we listen to your ideas, not where we've already decided and we're moving forward without your input, would be wonderful. I think that would be great to have that group.
There is a second part of this question, using Rupperina as an example, and the fact that they have gotten sponsors and things like that. And we have formed a committee to begin looking for sponsors and donors. We're fortunate that Mayor Trongut, Mayor Vandergriff, and Judge Executive James K. have all volunteered to serve on that committee to try and seek out those opportunities that would offset the funding burden for the schools. So that second part of that is something that we're exploring right now.
How will the board use feedback from the forum to make future decisions regarding funding for the high school project?
I think anytime, I'm a firm believer, anytime that you can get input from the public, that it always helps. You know, we get input a lot. We get input in our communities. We get input when we go to Kroger. We get input when we go to Kroger, when we go to the post office, when we go to the drug store, we get a lot of input. One of the things that I would like to add, that reading the paper this week, there was a headline that said, "Nothing travels faster, nothing spreads faster than fear." And if you look at all of the questions that we've had intertwined, all of those questions is fear. Fear about what the budget revisions, how would they affect us? How would they affect staff? How will they affect students? How will they affect us as parents and students? And I firmly believe that before we have another round forum, that we have to have a plan to tell each of you how the budget revisions will affect you, because that's the only way that the fear is going to dissipate or lessen. It's for you all to have a better understanding of how this affects you as employees, parents, students. I was hopeful we could have had that done by this evening, but we haven't. So I would ask my other board members, and even my superintendent, to work with me that we can address this issue. There was a question in there, why would you want to move forward with a substandard school that takes significant cuts and kind of guts everything? And I don't think we have to do that. I'm an ardent and firm believer that that won't be necessary. I believe that we can build a school that is worthy of each of you and your students and your grandchildren and the students who will come that not even here yet. I believe we can do that. We had a lot of, a lot of good news this year. Some of our bonding potential may rise. We may not need the full amount that is, that we're talking about in option one and two. There's a lot of positives, but we have to provide you all with information that will help alleviate the fear, and I pledge to do that. But when you, when you work on the budget, you work on future revenue, you know, there's some things that haven't been discussed this evening about revenue, about our distilled spirits. We have a lot of bourbon sitting around Woodford County, and it went up $400,000 last year. We have, there's hope. I don't mean to embellish. There's hope.
Does anyone else want to respond to that? I want to take just a minute, because we're about out of time, that I am really encouraged by being here as a Woodford County resident. As I noted at the beginning, I didn't have anything to do with any of this process to begin with. I think someone here got my name from someone at the School Boards Association, because I've done some things with them before. But what stands out to me is that so many of you are here, so you care, and it matters to you. And all of the folks here at the table care, the school board members especially, it is not a paid position. So, but I mean, they are volunteering their time, and they do that because they care. And I think with community capacity like this, with so many of you here, and with combined needs, you know, in Woodford County, we are all in this together. In one way or the other, we are in it together. And whether we agree or disagree on details, it's our county. We live in it. We want the best for our children. We want the best for our community. So I see hope by the fact that there were so many really good questions submitted, so many that we really couldn't get to them. And there's another whole stack of questions that people submitted tonight, and it's not because nobody wants to answer your questions, it's just your questions are, as noted previously, this is very involved and very complicated, and it involves things like taxes, and it involves things like children. And those are all things we care about. So it isn't an easy problem to solve, but I would encourage all of you to keep providing input, and I would also encourage all of you to listen to each other, because if all you do is state your position and you don't listen to other people's positions, there's no way to get to the middle. And in the end, if you don't get to the middle, you don't get anywhere. So keep that in mind as the process moves forward. I think that there has been some comments that there will be other, there will be at least another forum to answer some of these other questions. And then the folks here are committed to answering your questions and getting feedback. Do you...
Again, I am 1% of five, but I would hope that we could gather again to at least answer the rest of these questions. And I've said this before, and I think Kelly said it, there's a lot of stuff, a lot of information coming from the General Assembly that may very greatly affect some of these numbers. So, you know, we will definitely get that out there as soon as we're sure. We dare to hope, but, you know, we know nothing's for certain.
Can we get Pam around the floor?
Yes.
Thank you, Pam, so much. She stepped into this, and clearly was a great, great choice, and I'm glad we met her. We may use her more, so. All right. So I think we've come to the end of our time. Do I have a motion? Mr. Wilson moves to adjourn. Ms. Bradley, second. All in favor, say aye. Motion passes five to nothing. Meeting is adjourned.